All right, at this time I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order and call upon Commissioner Frank Quinte to lead us in an indication.
Y'all would please bow your heads in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Most gracious Father, we thank you for this privilege of meeting today. Give us insight to lead with integrity that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Guide our hearts, our minds, and in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and supreme wisdom. We thank you for being our source of guidance today, and in your name, sweet Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome to all of you for being at our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. First item on the agenda is citizen communication. Do we have any signed up?
I have none.
All right. Next item on the agenda are the approval of the minutes, special meeting of, special joint meeting of the City Commission and the Harlingen Community Improvement Board of August 23rd, 2019, the special joint meeting of City Commission and the Harlingen Community Improvement Board of September 25th, 2019, the regular meeting of November 6th, 2019, and the regular meeting of January 15th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now is your motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Item two is, actually what we're going to go to, I want to, you know, go to item, without objection, I'm going to go to item eight. Mr. Gavada is here, I'm going to go to items eight and nine, and I know that he has another meeting to go to, so we want to try to accommodate him, consideration possible action to approve. The bids received on the following properties struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale conducted on November 5th, 2019. A tract lot seven block 20, Fenwood Heights subdivision subdivision city of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, as described in volume 10, 807, page 31, official records of Cameron County, Texas, count number 178720270. B lot one, block 32, Fenwood Heights addition in addition to the city of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, according to map replat there recorded in volume seven, page 21, map records of Cameron County, Texas, count number 1787232010. And C lot four, block 16, Haven Ford subdivision subdivision of the city of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, as described in volume 4700, page 287, official records of Cameron County, count number 18478716040. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and good to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. What you have before you, items eight and items nine are very similar. One is for you to consider the bids received at the most recent tax resale that was held in November of 2019, and the second item is to approve a resolution that will authorize the mayor to sign the various deeds if you approve the bids. A little background on these properties, if you recall, whenever we are attempting to collect the taxes, you know, going to litigation is a very last resort. When we do go to litigation and we take a judgment, then we try to do a payment agreement at that time. If a payment agreement cannot be entered, then we put the property up for sale. When the properties are put up for sale and the bid, the opening bid, is the lesser of the amount of taxes owed or the appraised value of the property. If a bid is accepted, somebody bids what is owed, no problem, the city gets its money, the school district, county, and on down the line. It's when no one bids on a property is when that property gets struck off and it's struck off to all the entities as trustees for one another. And those struck off properties, when we get a sufficient inventory, we have one, maybe two, resales a year. We always have one in November. Sometimes if we have the inventory, we'll take all those struck off properties and have another sale in July. This is the, we have three properties that were resold in November. The opening bid was the amount owed to the city, the school, and the county. If there isn't a bid there, then we accept offers from the floor, and usually that's less than what is owed. We accept those bids based on us going, or contingent on us going to all the entities and getting that lower bid approved by each entity. If one of the entities does not approve that bid, then it stays struck off. So what we have here are three properties where we've accepted a contingent offer, contingent on your approval, and I'll be going to the school district soon to bring up these same properties. What you're getting is about 83 cents on the dollar, and so if you recall, usually it's been, it's been as low as 10 cents on the dollar, and it's increased over the years to around 50 cents on the dollar. So you're, this is a pretty good offer. Point, or 83 cents on the dollar for three properties. You were originally owed on all three, $34,614. If you accept the offers, you'll be getting $28,680 on three. By accepting the offer, this gets a property back on the tax roll and producing income on a yearly basis. When it struck off to the entities, since you are a, you're not a, you're a nonprofit, the properties are exempt, so there are no new taxes being rolled over. So it behooves you to get them off the exempt rule and get them back on the active tax roll. With that, I-
May I ask a question?
Yes.
When they come back on the tax roll, are they at the same appraised value? Does that stay the same?
That's a very good question. The short answer is yes, but since they're going back on a roll from an exempt status, the appraisal district historically has gone out and reassessed that property, and so there might be an adjustment.
But it won't, I understand the adjustment, but it won't go at the purchase price?
No, 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 it'll be on the appraised value.
Good question.
Any other questions? So we need a motion to accept the bids as proposed and recommended.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine is a companion item to the prior item, consideration possible action to approve following resolutions approving the bids received on the tax resale conducted on November 5th from the following properties. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a tax resale deed on behalf of the city of Harlingen for A tract one, lot seven, block 20, Fenwood Heights subdivision subdivision city of Harlingen, volume 10, 807, volume 31, official records of Cameron County, count number 178720270, for lot one, block 32, Fenwood Heights addition in the city of Harlingen, Cameron County, according to map replat there recorded in volume seven, 21, map records of Cameron County, count number 1787232010, and for lot four, block 16, Haven Ford subdivision subdivision city of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, as described in volume 4700, page 287, official records of Cameron County, Texas, count number 18478716040. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. We have several presentations, and I was going to go to, going to go to item five because I know we have a number of people in the audience for that item, and I was going to also ask if this was a presentation and discussion regarding South Texas Emergency Care. We have two commissioners who are missing tonight, and I didn't know whether y'all wanted to defer. We could replace this item on the agenda, or if you want to proceed tonight.
Up to the commission. We have a number of people who are here that-
Yeah, no, I-
-have come, and we're happy to do it now.
I think it would be, I think it's up to you if you want, if you want to have, if you want to wait for a meeting where we have all of the commission here, or if you just want to go ahead, because you do have a lot of people, it's up to you.
Why don't we go ahead, and then whenever the other two commissioners are at a meeting, we're happy to come back and do it again.
Okay.
So are you calling item number five then?
Yep, item five. I did, I think I did call it, presentation and discussion regarding South Texas Emergency Care.
My name's Randy Whittington. I represent South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. I've been a supporter of this particular organization since 1981. Actually, before that, in 1981, I had the honor as mayor of Harlingen signing a contract for South Texas Emergency Care to provide emergent EMS services to the city of Harlingen. The first contract between the city of Harlingen and South Texas Emergency Care was signed two years earlier by my predecessor, Mayor Bob Uker. So for more than 40 years, since 1979, STEC has been the only EMS provider operating with a license in the city of Harlingen. To understand, a number of people, I think, from time to time ask why that is, and to understand why that is, it's important to understand a little bit about the history of this organization, its structure, and the relationship between STEC and the city of Harlingen, as well as the relationship between STEC and the other seven communities that it serves, and the Cameron County Emergency Services District, which governs the rural areas for EMS, and we serve roughly half of the rural areas of Cameron County. Before briefly describing that history, I want to take a few minutes to introduce some of the officers and directors and staff that govern South Texas Emergency Care, serve on their board, and handle its operations on a day-to-day basis. A number of these people are here, I'll introduce them, and there are some who are unable to be here tonight, and I'll at least mention who they are. Let me, and some of them you may hear from before we finish our presentation. Let me start with the president of our board, Joe Wagner. Joe's been on the, on the board for a little over 10 years, I think. Jerry Fleurier, who is the, a vice president of the organization. Jerry, you may recognize also as a member of the Harlingen School Board, longtime member. She is one of the founding directors of South Texas Emergency Care. She's served on the board of STEC for over 40 years. Frank Gonzalez is not here. Frank has been on that board. He used to be the executive director of Sue Clinica here in Harlingen. He's been on the STEC board for over 20 years. Mickey Bowlin is here. Mickey? Local banker, has been on the board for over 20 years. Brendan Hall is not here, but Brendan Hall is also one of the founding directors, having been on the board since 1979, former city attorney of Harlingen and is an officer of the corporation. The direct, the other directors, Dr. Michael Mohan. Dr. Mohan is the medical director for South Texas Emergency Care, and I should, even though he's retired from the board of directors a week or so ago effectively, but one of, also one of the founding directors of South Texas Emergency Care and served as the medical director for decades, Dr. Garner Klein. Each one of the members of this organization, the cities and the emergency services district have representatives on the board of this particular organization, and they are part of the governing structure of the board. The city of Harlingen's representative on this board for over 20 years has been Assistant City Manager Gabe Gonzalez, who I think requires no introduction in this room at least. Nat Lopez, I don't think Nat's here with us this evening, but he's a former Harlingen City Commissioner and has been on the board for 15 years. Somebody who can tell a lot of stories about the history of this organization and the history of EMS services in the city of Harlingen is a former city manager of Harlingen who has served on our board for almost 10 years, and that's Covino Satello. The city manager from Rio Hondo, Ben Medina, has been on the board for five years. Manny Vela is, is a at-large board member and represents one of the two hospitals that wind up being the destination for a lot of the people that we transport in our ambulance vehicles, and Manny's been on the board for five years. Matt Waltoff, who is also the CEO at Harlingen Medical Center, represents that hospital on, on our board and has been on the board for, since he assumed that position. The LaFeria City Manager Jaime Sandoval has been on the board for three years, representing that city. San Bonito has been a member of this organization for many, many years. Their board representative is their assistant city manager Fred Bell, and they're represented here this evening. I think Fred is at a city commission meeting in San Bonito. They're represented by their fire chief, Danny Watkins. Gene Campos has been on this board since 1979. I don't think Gene's here, but Gene is one of the four founding, founding directors of this organization that has been on the board for the entire history of this organization. Clifford Rowl is a former police and fire chief at South Padre Island and has been on this board for almost 20 years. Chief Danny Thays from Santa, the Santa Rosa Fire Chief has been on the board for over 10 years. Joe Jones is the representative from Palm Valley and is a former city commissioner there and has been on the board for seven years. One of our brand-new board members is Bill Reagan, the executive director of Loews and Fishes. Mayor Dave Kush from Primera, mayor, represents the city of Primera as, as one of the members of this organization. And then the final director is County Commissioner Gus Ruiz, who represents the Cameron County Emergency Services District on our board. Just a couple of the staff members, most of them you probably know. Bill Aston, the executive director, has been the executive director of this organization and a member of this community for 34 years. His deputy executive director, Leonard Callier, is, he came at the same time as Bill and has also been here for 34 years. Rennie, is Rennie here? Rennie Pettis is the director of transport services. You'll hear a little bit from him in a few minutes, and Rennie has been in that position at STEC for 30 years. And Pete Moreno, who is the director of support services and our head trainer and education coordinator, has been there for 15 years. By indicating who these individuals are, this gives you a little bit of an idea, I think, why this organization is unique and why it is different from all of the other EMS providers that operate in the Rio Grande Valley. Little bit briefly of the history, and then I'll turn it over to Joe Wagner. In 1975, two years after I moved to Harlingen, the only ambulance company in this town up and left town, and we were left without an ambulance service in our community at all. If you had a medical emergency that required taking a family member to the hospital, then you had two choices. You could take them in your own vehicle, or you could try to call one of the funeral homes and get a hearse to give them a ride to the hospital. That is literally true, that people were being taken to the hospital in hearsees, I guess hoping that that was the only time they were going to be in that vehicle if they made it there in time. So for a few years in the mid-'70s, we were without any ambulance service at all, and the city leaders weren't, thought this was not acceptable. They got together with community leaders, civic organizations in Harlingen, the doctors and other representatives of the medical community, and the hospital, at the time the only hospital in town was Valley Baptist. They got together and formed a committee to try and study the problem and come up with a solution. After several years of studying that, a particular problem, and learning what was going on in the rest of the nation with the development of emergency medical service systems as opposed to just ambulances with a driver, they decided to form a nonprofit 501(c)(3) tax-exempt charitable foundation, and that's when STEC was born. It was originally called the Harlingen Community Foundation, but it changed its name over the years to South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. The local doctors, one of whom was Garner Klein, Charlie Fox, and some others, trained paramedics. There weren't the formal training programs that we have now. They trained paramedics, the city of Harlingen bought a couple of ambulances, and STEC started operating in 1979, providing EMS service with those two ambulances that they leased from the city of Harlingen and some financial support from the city of Harlingen. From that point on, STEC has had stakeholders, not stockholders. No, but there are no dividends, there are no people who are looking to STEC to share in profits because they're not in business to make a profit. They're in business strictly to provide emergency medical services to the members, the residents and visitors in the communities that they serve. Nobody gets dividends, nobody gets bonuses or anything like that. Every dime of the revenues that are earned by South Texas Emergency Care by transporting patients and providing EMS services are put back into the organization to pay for state-of-the-art vehicles, state-of-the-art equipment, and highly-trained, highly-skilled EMS personnel. Over the years after 1979, when they first got started, the first years were a little bit rough, but the quality of the service improved and got, got to be a very high-quality level of service, and Harlingen's neighboring communities decided that they wanted to do the same thing that Harlingen, Harlingen was doing, and they joined as members of this nonprofit organization. We're organized as a nonprofit organization, so we have members, we don't have owners. Over the years, up until today, they have started serving other communities of the ones that I named earlier, and the board of this organization has been operated by the cities and the government units that actually are served by South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. I'm going to let Joe talk a little bit about some of the other services that are provided and some of the other information that has been expressed as concerns about this relationship. Let her talk about that for a minute, and I think Rennie has an announcement that he wants to make about a new program, which reminds me of somebody else I should introduce. She's not on the board, but I'd like, there's Judy still here. You introduce, y'all all know Judy Quisenberry, who's the executive director of the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. This is a little evidence of the support from the community that STEC gets. The Legacy Foundation has very generously provided grant funds to, I know Judy doesn't like to brag about this sort of stuff, so I'll brag for them. They've provided grant funds, two separate grants of close to a million dollars each for the purchase of equipment and for the beginning of the initiation of a program that you'll hear about a little bit later this, in this presentation. With that, let me introduce Joe Wagner, our president.
Thank you.
Joe, welcome. Glad to have you here. If I could just make a, I want to just kind of make a couple of little announcements. First of all, welcome Mayor Kush. Mayor, Mayor, thank you for being here tonight. It's good to have you here with us, and I want to especially recognize our, our neighboring mayor. And also wanted to let y'all know, many of you saw Dan Sarah not here in his chair earlier this evening, and he's disappeared, and that's because I said, "You have the flu, you should go home. I do not want to sit next to you."
Neither do I.
So he wanted to be here, but I think it was better that he, that he retire for the evening. So anyway, thank you, thank you. Go ahead.
And thank you for having me. My name is Joe Wagner, and I'm president of South Texas Emergency Service. And I can tell you, the first thing I want to say, mayor and commissioners, is how proud I have been to serve with this group of people. They are the most giving board I have ever sat at. And there's a thing about first responders that everybody needs to know. It's in their DNA to give. None of them go into this profession thinking they're going to be millionaires, but all of them have the biggest heart and the most giving personalities that I've ever run into. I would give up almost anything to stay on this board. If time was an issue, I think I'd give up sleep. That's how much I love these people. First of all, there were over 300,000 911 calls last year. That's a lot for anybody to deal with, but we have first responders that make it work. Why? Because we have teamwork. We're all on the same page. STEC, the fire department, the police department, we work together. Nobody argues about territories, nobody argues about this is not my job. Everybody just does their job. There are 82 personnel with STEC, and I call them all overachievers. They give and give and give of time, whether they're supposed to be there or not, they're there. Never has a 911 person calling that they weren't dealt with. This is something that is so reassuring for any community. You're not on hold when you call 911. We have, I wanted to do this, also Randy did it, thank Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation for keeping us equipped with the best high-tech communication system any organization can have. They also make sure that our ambulances are equipped with the latest equipment and technology to save lives, and that's what we're all about, saving lives. That's what this community, that was their legacy, was to make sure everybody in this community was safe. I tell my family when they go out of town, hurry up and get back in the district as fast as you can, because I want to make sure if there's an emergency, I know you're taken care of, and I know that's what all of us look for. We have a lot of programs that have started that help the community. There's one called Stop the Bleed. Over 3,000 schools now have people there that can stop a child or an adult from bleeding to death before an ambulance gets there. This program is so successful, and it's, it's so important for a community, because sometimes we are all first responders, whether we like it or not. You go by an accident, you see people in the street, you're going to stop because that's what you do. That's what the valley does. It's one thing I love about it. Everybody here helps. The other thing is, is that we have advanced levels of emergency care. We long ceased to be just an ambulance group. We're not just ambulances, we're an extension of the healthcare in this valley, and I, and I'm terribly proud of what they're going, the direction they're going on that, and you'll hear more about that from Rennie later. Sports games. All of the sports games, you'll see an ambulance there. We don't charge the schools, we don't charge for watching to make sure children, if they are hurt, are immediately taken care of. This is just something that STEC does. We care about this community. We're always an outreach to this community. And we're always, we don't look for problems, but if they're there, I'm so proud that they solve them, and the legacy has helped with that. If we see something has to be done, there's new equipment out there we should have, we're going to get it. One way or the other, we're going to get it. We have a fixed wing service. If you need to be transported out of this valley, there's a plane ready to take off to take you where you have to go to get emergency care. Something that can be provided in the valley, and that's not as serious as it was years ago. Now we have more and more services here, so we don't have to transport people out of the valley. the valley. But if the case arises, we're ready for it. And that's the other thing. We're proactive. This organization doesn't wait for problems to happen. They look to the future to see where they're going to be, and we take care of them. The board has several committees. One of them is a budget committee. And they keep us constantly knowing where we're going, how we're going to get there. And Leonard, God bless him, is absolutely head of this department of taking care of budgets. I think over the past couple of years, we have been audited by any government agency that's out there that can audit you. We come up so clean that they decide to do it again, just to make sure we're not fudging on anything. And that's the truth. I mean, Medicare, Medicaid, all of them, we come out clean because we are a very transparent organization, and we do operate our business like a business. On February 22nd, there's going to be a free four-hour program that is... Makes you a first responder if you're in your home and something happens. It will be free of charge at the community center for anybody that wants to learn Stop the Bleed, how to do CPR. These are all things that these wonderful people do, again, at no charge to the community. Now, I'm going to turn this over unless somebody has something specific. I can just tell you that this organization will go on for years because it's run properly. And I would like to say something else. If I call 911, I may want to make sure that whoever is responding that call doesn't have an Uber with a transport in it for my loved one. I want to make sure it's a fully-equipped ambulance with qualified people that know how to take care of business. And that's what we're all about, taking care of business. I'd like to turn the program over to give... Tell you a new direction that we're taking that I think is going to be beneficial for the community. I'm going to turn it over to Rennie Pettis, Director of Transport. And we are all very excited about this new program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Hello, everybody. So like Dan, I just came down with a cold, so I apologize. And I'm going to stay as far back as I can.
He has the flu.
Yeah, he's sick. So hopefully, I just have a cold. So I want to introduce myself. My name is Rennie Pettis. I'm a nurse paramedic. I've been with the foundation for the last 30 years, and one of the greatest jobs I've ever had in my life. This is my profession, and I'm very proud of it. Born and raised in Harlingen, and wanted to practice what I learned and back in the city of Harlingen. So I want to introduce you to a new program that we're going to be starting with EMS. So traditionally, EMS was about, you call 911, we pick you up. You have two choices: go to the hospital, or you can refuse and stay home. We are opening up the Community Health Paramedicine Program, which is about and through the assistance of the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation, something that Judy and I had talked about probably about five years ago. And I think she was getting restless with it because we're... I really... When I saw this program, I thought, "This will be very beneficial to the... Not only the city of Harlingen, but the cities around Harlingen as well." So the idea is to also help provide care at the house, at the house, at home. A lot of folks, I don't know how many of you have liked being in a hospital, when you have the opportunity to go to a hospital and you have to be admitted for a couple of days, it's not really a fun time for you. So our goal is to take care of patients at home. This program is about looking at readmissions at hospitals and tackling those folks that visit hospitals routinely. It also looks at those patients that are using the system frequently. In other words, what we call our frequent flyers. So you have folks that call 911 almost on a daily basis. "I want to go to the hospital." And even though they were there yesterday, they want to go back again. So this program is about intervening. So now we'll have that other option. Something that takes EMS in a different direction is to help build a foundation and trust with the medics and the services that we're providing on keeping these patients at home. So the trust, it has to be with the physicians, it has to be with the medics, it has to be with the patients. And we're doing a very good job in getting this plan rolled out. Like I said, the Valley Baptist Legacy has provided the funding to help us get the initiating part of the program out and about. So purchasing the vehicles and writing special protocols with the assistance of our medical advisory committee, which is composed of Dr. Moan, Dr. Klein, of course, as he's stepping down, is a big part of that. And I want to thank him for that because he helped us push that. So over the last couple of years, our goal really was to build this program up from the bottom. And what we needed was a foundation. So a couple of years ago, we visited with the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. It was about setting up that foundation, that we have to have a good foundation to build upon it, right? So what we did was, we worked on all our EKG monitoring, all our Bluetooth capabilities, all the transmissions, all the ambulances are connected via Wi-Fi to our dispatch center. All the instructions come off of mobile data terminals, and that can be... So much information can be obtained for the medics, particularly when they're responding to calls. So we're going to be using that foundation to build upon this community health paramedicine program. So going forward, we should have this program up and running probably in the next month or so. And again, our goal is to help alleviate some of these ERs that are full. As you know, our emergency rooms are being taken advantage of sometimes by patients that, instead of going to their primary care physician, they go to the emergency room. And again, we're seeing a lot of patients. And that really ties up our health care, and it really puts a bind on our hospitals as far as what they can do. So our goal is to go into the house, educate, a big dose of education to some of these patients, and help them understand that we need to get you well. We need to make them compliant. We need to help them learn what health is about. And so by doing this, part of our program, part of the biggest part of this thing is going to be about just education, sitting down with somebody and educating them about what the program is about, what their condition is about, and how we can make them well. And that's the whole plan of it. It's a different direction, like I said, for EMS because typically, our jobs have been, "You call 911, we go and we pick you up, take you to the hospital." And now, our goal now is if we can keep you at home, we definitely want to do that. As you've seen in the studies, those that stay at home heal faster, and we don't have that burden that's going on. It'll save the health care business millions of dollars a year, and it's proven very effectively in other parts of the United States, as well as the state of Texas. So we're moving forward with this, and we hope that with the support of the city of Harlingen, that we can move this forward to help the citizens of Harlingen and the areas around Harlingen as well. Do you have any questions? Well, I thank you, folks. And I'll try to keep my germs to myself, so.
Does the commissioner have any questions?
You know, there's a rule, whenever you start naming names, you'll inevitably forget somebody. And I either have dementia or I forgot to mention one member of our board and an officer that's here. I mentioned, introduced his boss, and maybe I thought that was good enough, but Art Cavassos, who you recognize as our superintendent of our school district, is also an officer of the... A vice president of the organization and a member of the board of directors and has been for a number of years. Just one or two other things that I'd like to mention. I think it's important to understand, you're getting a little flavor of why this organization is unique and different than all of the other EMS providers. We're the only EMS provider in the valley, in South Texas, and maybe beyond that, that is actually governed and operated by the communities and the representatives of the communities that they serve, the governmental entities that serve, and all of the at-large members that we've directed... Have introduced tonight. We're also a partner with the city of Harlingen and these other communities in things besides EMS services. And I think that that aspect of the relationship is important to understand, too. South Texas Emergency Care is the sponsor and was the moving force in establishing a first responder program in the Fire Department here in the city of Harlingen and continues to provide training to paramedics that are part of the first responder program, both here and in the other communities where we've helped start first responder programs. And we are the statutory legal sponsor of those programs. And our medical directors help develop the protocols for those first responders to deal with. In addition to that, any of you who have been to our facilities here in Harlingen know that we have a state-of-the-art communications center. That communications center is the backup emergency center for the city of Harlingen. If we have, as we did in Hurricane Dolly, where you had a problem with a generator that was failing in the city's facility, you were able to move to the facility at South Texas Emergency Care without missing a beat and handle the emergency needs of the community. We are also the backup... Our dispatchers, all of whom are nationally certified EMS dispatchers, are the backup for the dispatch center, the 911 dispatch center here in the city of Harlingen. The dispatch center that's operated by the city receives 911 calls for fire calls, police calls, and EMS calls. We are... They refer those EMS calls to South Texas Emergency Care and then dispatch the fire calls and the police calls. Our dispatchers provide backup services to the Fire Department in case they get overloaded and need additional personnel to help dispatch calls for them. Right now, you're... And maybe the fire chief will mention it during his presentation. Right now, the city is undergoing its evaluation for the ISO ratings, what we used to call the key rate, that determines what your homeowner's insurance premiums are going to be for all of your homeowners and property owners in the city of Harlingen. And that backup function that South Texas Emergency Care provides for the city hopefully will allow the city to get an improved ISO rating, which will benefit all of the homeowners and property owners in the community. So over the years, the city of Harlingen has invested... During the first 20 or so years of the organization's history, the city of Harlingen has invested enormous amounts of money in the development of an emergency medical services system to serve the citizens of this community. Whenever the South Texas Emergency Care reached a point where they were financially stable enough to stand on their own, the city of Harlingen was no longer... And our other communities were no longer asked to invest in or help financially support South Texas Emergency Care. They do it entirely on patient revenues now and don't ask... For the last 10 years, the city of Harlingen's contract has not called for any payment to South Texas Emergency Care for the services you receive. So it's not just a contract with another EMS provider or another private for-profit ambulance company. It is a contractual relationship, but it's also a partnership relationship. And this organization was founded and created in large part through the efforts of the city of Harlingen and your predecessors on the governing body of this city. Would like to invite any of our board members that might have something to say about anything that I may have omitted or that we didn't mention, and we're happy to take any questions from the commissioners or the mayor.
Does anybody have any questions? This is just a presentation tonight. We asked the South Texas Emergency Care to come and give a presentation, kind of like the Fire Department's going to give a presentation in a few minutes. And we certainly... There's no action to be taken, just informational for the community and for the city commission. So unless there are any questions from the commission, I want to thank and express my appreciation to all of you who came and spoke on behalf of the South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. I also express our appreciation to the board for their long service to our community and to Joe for your leadership, and for each and every one of you board members out there that have served this nonprofit organization so well for so long. So thank you for your contributions to our community and for helping keep our citizens safe and helping to get them well quickly. So thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
So I think it's appropriate that now that maybe you have the fire chief come up and give his presentation on the Fire Department, kind of a good segue, skipping around a little bit on the agenda, but that's okay. Chief?
It'd be harder to follow there, but... Thank you. Mayor, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, this is a brief overview of the Harlingen Fire Department. And we want to share with you what we've been doing here for the past five years or so, four years back, some of the projects that we have in motion, some of the things that we're working on, some of the things that we've purchased through the support of our city council, mayor, city commission. And I want to share that with you and with the citizens of Harlingen. If I can get this thing to work. Seven urban fire stations, one airport fire station, total of eight for the city of Harlingen. We have them throughout the city, seven stations. And we also have, as far as manpower, we have 110 firefighters that make up the Harlingen Fire Department. We work... They work 24 on, 48 off, coverage, seven stations, and again, the airport VIA station number five. We also have current fire contracts with Palm Valley, Primera, City of Primera, City of Combs, and Cameron County ESD servicing these communities with fire protection. And we also service the Cameron County ESD also with fire protection as well. Harlingen Fire Department operations report for 1/2019 to 12/31/19, one year, total 5,000 calls. A little breakdown of what we responded to, the majority of them being, of course, emergency medical services. Towing 3,230, we support EMS response with first response in the city of Harlingen. Our individual firefighters, some paramedics, and mostly of them EMTs are staffed. The engine companies are staffed with, of course, ADs and all the first response medical equipment that is needed to provide first responder care upon arrival and waiting for our EMS. We have a breakdown also of other types of calls that we respond to throughout the city, even to include severe weather, as we had here in the past few years. Total 5,285 calls. We average about 5,000, 6,000 calls a year, and that's quite a load when we have the majority, again, being 3,230 this past year for emergency medical services. That involves major accidents, medical assist, EMS support. Lot of Harlingen... Our Harlingen Fire Department completed ongoing and future community projects this dates back, again, 2016 through this past year, and where we're going to be headed with some of the projects. Four major project areas that we focus on, and it was mentioned earlier, we're going to be focusing a lot on... We have been focusing a lot on insurance services office rating reduction, which is our ISO. We are now, believe it or not, going to be going through an ISO inspection here for the city of Harlingen this April, and we're preparing for that. We also establish partnerships through create... To create opportunities for training in many ways, and we'll share some of those with you here briefly. And we also always seeking grants to strengthen our training resources, as well participate with our community special events, which we'll share with you. Some of the projects that we've completed this past years involve, of course, maintaining and accomplish the station coverage, which added Station 2 on the west side in 2017. We did this with no additional positions added. We absorbed all that, which was a huge savings to the city of Harlingen, approximately a savings of $500,000 a year in salaries that we didn't have to add on to the expense of manpower here in the city. We completed that in 2017. It's up and running, services all the west side, and we've been able to provide also excellent response to our neighboring community of Palm Valley Primera and from that area on Stewart Place Road. on Stewart Place Road. Cities also provided here in the past few years, much-needed fire equipment, Engine One, Engine Two, and Engine Seven, brand-new fire trucks that have been able to provide good service here in the community. We've converted to a different color, too, black and red, so makes for a better-looking fire truck, if you ask me, but we went for a different style, different change. We also have taken advantage, in-house, we have a lot of talent from our, not only our medical response from our EMTs and firefighters also, or welders, and they carry a lot of experience in other areas. And they've also invested a lot of time and effort in creating our mobile rescue boat trailer. And we've, that was built in-house, been real handy this past years. We're also partnering up with Cameron County Emergency Management and our Fire March Office to create a task force here in Cameron County that's going to bring in the Border Patrol, the Fish and Wildlife, fire, different fire departments throughout the Cameron County area to be ready to respond in the event that something goes wrong. Those was completed, and we appreciate all the hard work and effort from the firefighters in-house. As far as training, also, the city project that we've added that also helps reduce our ISO, is much-needed training facilities that we needed for our fire service, right behind our EOC. Our guys need to train. For the most part, most of the training has taken place in Hidalgo County. We have to drive all the way to Edinburgh, and that's about an 80, 90-mile round trip and taking equipment all the way out there, so limits the amount of training that we can actually provide for our firefighters. So, we want to do as much of it here locally, partner up with communities and provide some of the hands-on experience training that the guys need. Project was completed in 2017. And there, we also do a lot of that with our partners here locally with our airport and other communities as well. We're also a certified training facility. We're in the process of running our own academies. We partnered up with the city of San Manito. We have our, the fire chief, we thank him for editing. And we, instead of having to travel all over the valley, we do it in-house. So, it goes a long way with reducing costs and partnering up with our communities. Ongoing projects we have, again, number-one goal is to reduce our ISO. We're a present rating of three. We want to go to a two. The lower, of course, being the better of all. It being a one, communities in the state of Texas that are one, very few, that we benefit. It goes hand-in-hand with the economic development of corporations. The lower the rating, the more businesses are attracted to come into your community. Right? Am I correct? So, that's why, and part of it comes from the fire department and a lot of components that we're going to discuss with you that we're working on. And maintaining adequate station coverage, the city of Harlingen is blessed to have eight stations that we cover. We have a good amount of coverage here for a city our size. We completed that. We have the pumper, I say pumper, the fire trucks that we have that are adequate for the amount of the inspection that we're going to be running through. Things that we're going, working on is, of course, our engine company inspection program and hydrant distribution and maintenance program with Harlingen Water Works. And we're working closely, again, with folks from STEC and our 911 communication, because that's what they target. So, again, we've got to do more inspections in the community, making sure the community's safe, is prevent fires, not have to respond to them. If we don't have to respond to a fire, we're better off. We want to prevent them. So, that's our goal. And the other thing is developing partnership with the water department. ISO requires that we do our own hydrant maintenance, so we are going to be doing that. We're going to see our fire trucks out in the community doing a lot of what you see there. And also enhancing our 911. As was mentioned earlier, we've got a perfect opportunity to take advantage of a beautiful system that's in place, that we can partner up with the two communications centers, making a better setup for ISO to come in and give us credit, and that is partner up with STEC and 911. So, that's what we're going to be targeting. Partnerships, we've got Harlingen School District, SERC, the Boy Scouts, and who else? Oh, the school district, again, we're partnering up with and preventing, and helping set up multi-hazard response, which we already came before the commission. We also partnered up with Border Patrol. With the school district, we implemented, we implemented 2017 a Harlingen Fire Academy. Thank you to our superintendent for that. It offered a great opportunity for our seniors, our juniors and seniors to become firefighters and EMTs and go straight to work. And not only that, they get an opportunity to get a degree free, because in the state of Texas, firefighters get free college. So, that gives them an opportunity to go to school. They graduate from the high school with a 26 college hours already under their belt. So, that's a program we establish here, and thank you to our superintendent for supporting that and our city commission. That's ongoing. And we also have a good partnering relationship with SERC. They do a lot of volunteer work on, they're going to be doing part of the partnership with this, to provide the training that's coming up here in the next few weeks. And we also partner again with the school to help do some of the inspections that they're doing for the school, our department, along with the police department and others. We're also partnering up with Boy Scouts to start our SERC program, a team SERC program that should be coming up here in 2020. That's our goal, to help these kids to come to a place where they can continue to learn and be part of a team. And that's what we're trying to do with the fire department in conjunction with the SERC department. And again, multi-hazard training, multi-hazard response, being prepared. We've asked STEC, our partnership with the Harlingen Police Department, and our fire department to work in conjunction with our schools to make it a better place. And that's ongoing, and we've worked real hard, and thank you for that, SERC, and everybody that's been part of that, and our commission for approving our ordinance to move forward to get our plans in place. Working as one team. And with US Border Patrol, we took advantage of them being able to support our emergency medical training, along with our folks from STEC, to be able to provide our training for our firefighters. And that's all, and continued to happen. We just had one here last year, and we're going to have another one here coming soon. Our city is taking advantage with our master plan that they approved for us to be able to, with our parks director, Javier Mendez, to do some work on our training power that we have here for our continuing education that also helps reduce our ISO. These are projects that are ongoing. Along with our firefighter duties and medical response, the Harlingen Fire Department is also your regional hazmat team. This is your firefighters that work in the event that we have a hazardous material incident. We have 25 certified technicians that are ready to respond. We were awarded a grant here in 2018 of $80,000 to provide purchase of that or be able to purchase equipment, including suits. We just had a hazmat response here a couple of weeks ago, and they did an excellent job responding here in our area. Believe it or not, we have a corridor all the way to the checkpoint on I-69 and all the way here in Cameron County. We're part of their regional response team. Our folks are ready to respond. And we continue to look for grants. We need that clean burn project. Mayor, commissioners, that is something we need here, and we're going to continue to move forward to try to get money to be able to purchase that, because as I mentioned earlier, we have to travel all the way to Edinburgh to provide live fire burns. So, we'll continue to seek grants here in 2019, or 2020, to hopefully provide some facilities, such is what you see here for our folks here in the city of Harlingen. That's our goal. And last but final here, we have a lot of community events. Our firefighters, you see them on the street with the filiboot for the MDA. We do a lot of work with the American Red Cross, installing smoke detectors as our goal is prevent fires. If we don't have to respond and put the wet stuff on the red stuff, we'll just go. We will prevent them, have their lawn set up in the homes. And also during Christmas, just like the police department with their toy drive and everything they do, shop with the cops, we have our own Heart of Fire Christmas toy drive that we participate with as well, just to name a few. All right? And that end, and I'll show us a little bit of overview of the fire department, mayor, commissioners, and we are just very thankful that you've been able to support us and continue to support us, and we are very thankful for that, and we appreciate it. And I'll answer any questions.
Chief, thank you for your presentation. Anybody have a question for the chief?
I have a question. So, I noticed the Cardinals got their fire engine, but when are the Hawks going to get their green and orange?
We will definitely try to buy a green fire truck, so accommodate them.
Chief, I have a question. I noticed you showed that tower that you all used. I remember seeing that tower many, many years ago. In what condition is that tower right now? Is it still?
The training tower, Markowski, that's the one we showed earlier.
Yes.
And again, thanks to the commission, and they placed it on the comprehension plan that you have, and it's going to be something that we've already gotten direction for our city manager to move forward to fix it. There is some attention to detail that we need to provide for that tower. And there's some work that needs to be done.
Yeah, because I remember seeing it, I mean, passing through there, that tower's, I don't know, 50, 60 years old?
A little bit more than that, but we're there. But there's some work that's coming. And again, with Javier Mendez, our parks director, we should be moving forward to fixing and taking care of that, because if we lose that, we face possibly losing some drastic points on our ISO. That's a number-one component, part of the ISO that we need to keep in check.
What about the possibilities of relocating it up to the EOC location?
The burn unit that we are trying to get has an addition for repelling, but the tower component for that, because we're in so close proximity to the airport, it would present...
Okay.
We would have to gain permission from the FAA to have something like that.
Okay.
But we are working at repairing the one we have there.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Any other, any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, chief, thank you very much. Great presentation. All right, so let's go back to item two, which is a presentation on the Gatacata Trail, formerly known as the Active Plan. And I think Hoel is going to bring us up to date. I think there was an article in the San Antonio Express about this.
Oh, nice. So, mayor, city commission, a few years ago, the city of Harlingen participated in the active tourism plan, or called the Active Plan. So, we invited Eva Garcia, the project manager, to give an update to the commission and to see the next steps in the projects. So, Ms. Eva?
Thank you so much, Mr. Garcia. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city commission. As he mentioned, my name is Eva Garcia, and I am going to give a comprehensive but quick update on different activities happening throughout the region regarding the Gatacata Trails. So, as Hoel mentioned, the active transportation and active regional, active transportation, active tourism plan was developed in 2016 with 10 municipalities throughout Cameron County. The plan was funded by the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation and all of the partnering communities that were involved. Together, we developed these regional goals to generate new economic opportunities throughout Cameron County, diversifying the local tourism market, linking our Cameron County communities with a regional bicycle and pedestrian network, promoting healthy lifestyles. Today, we have formalized an advisory committee made up of 11 municipalities and nine other regional, state, and federal stakeholder organizations. We are working together to guide the implementation of the proposed active transportation network, which includes 230 miles of a multi-use trails system, 78 miles of paddling trails, and 120 miles of an on-street system.
I lost the quorum, but this is just a presentation. Can she continue?
Sure. Great, thank you. So, the Active Plan had a couple of examples, like the Great Allegheny Passage, which cost $80 million to complete, but now generates up to $100 million in annual spending. There are some other examples. But in 2017, we did develop an economic impact study that looked at potential healthcare cost savings of developing this regional transportation network, and they projected a potential cost savings from increased physical activity on the trails between $6 million and $12 million annually. So, that's really good for our community. We could generate potentially up to $7 million in annual spending from out-of-town visitors. And so, I'm just quickly going to go through some images. This is the off-street trail system that is proposed in the plan. We're looking at using existing public lands, like this drainage canal or irrigation canal, to develop the on-street, the off-street system. Brownsville to Los Fresnos connect was just mentioned in the newspapers because we had a groundbreaking for one of the phases of the project. This first phase is along National Park Service land. It was fully funded by the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. It's 1.8 miles. And then, the Los Fresnos also received Texas Parks and Wildlife grants with legacy funding to develop their trail network. And in between, to fill the gap, the city of Brownsville secured Transportation Alternative Program funding, which is federal transportation funds, to connect the city of Brownsville to the city of Los Fresnos. And so, now we're working on connecting other communities. We have submitted a federal land access program grant for a feasibility study of this 21-and-a-half-mile trail, which would connect National Park Service land to US Fish and Wildlife Service land, activating the Bahia Grande, which is currently closed to the public. It would also connect directly to Cameron County's investment in Laguna Vista for a South Texas ecotourism center. We're trying to keep access to waterways throughout the region open, developing infrastructure along these routes. Harlingen has a great project moving forward, the extension of the Arroyo Trail. Additionally, the plan proposes a paddling trail system, which could be designated by Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. It has the potential to connect the World Birding Center in South Padre Island to the World Birding Center in Harlingen. And there are several projects along the paddling trail route that are being invested in. We're waiting here back on some Rio Hondo boat ramp park funding. Port Isabel is currently under construction under Arturo Galván Coastal Park, which will have lots of public access to the water and develop picnic tables, walking trails. South Padre Island is developing a water sports park, and they just finished the scope of work for what those, what those plans might look like. And so, this is also an economic investment tool, and we're looking to help provide small business loans to expand what local businesses can offer to this market. And lastly, I just want to hit on the United States Bicycle Route. This is the on-street system. It's officially designated route. The Texas Department of Transportation would apply for a numbered designation through Ashto. And then, all it does is designate the number. The route would be on system like this for those who are more comfortable with that network. This is part of a national corridor plan developed by Adventure Cycling Association. In Texas, USBR 55 would connect Oklahoma to Mexico. It's part of our regional plan. This is a map of the loop that we're pursuing for designation. And so, this would basically designate, officially designate the state, there's no, officially designate the route, I'm sorry, there's no inherent liability. It doesn't impose any constraints. We are working with Texas Department of Transportation staff to draft and finalize this application. It would bring economic opportunities. It would be, it would help us map ourselves as a bicycle tourism destination, progressing interstate connections. We're currently getting stakeholder outreach. In March, we will be meeting in San Antonio at the Texas Trails and Active Transportation Conference to review the application. I am on the Texas Bicycle Advisory Committee. We meet April 6, and at that time, we would be finalizing and getting the executive director's signature, hopefully, for this submittal. And so, this is, would be decided in May 2020, and pending Ashto's decision, we would do a press release officially designating these routes. And so, in the future, we will be coming back to you for a letter of support for this route designation. And again, we are a regional organization, advisory committee made up of multiple stakeholders. And so, yeah, if you have any questions, please let me know. I hope that was quick enough.
If anybody have any questions for Eva, this is a great, great plan and project for our region, especially here in Cameron County. And so, it's great to see it inch forward and make progress. I mean, it's not inching forward, it's making big, big progress in some areas, and just the idea of being able to connect all this fully one day will be, it's just a fantastic idea. So, thank you for coming and bringing us up to date.
Thank you so much. I just, I really want to say that I sincerely appreciate your staff's support. I really enjoy working with the representatives from the city of Harlingen. They're always... They're always willing to, you know, provide their support, meet with me. And I think in the future, we'll be able to do more joint applications to help build the network and connect Harlingen to its neighboring communities. Thank you.
Very good. Thank, thanks a lot, Eva. And Javier and Joel, thank you. Thank you all. Next item is item four, the Presentation by the Harlingen Police Department on Laws and Ordinances relating to selling and soliciting from the roadway.
Good evening, City Commissioners, Mayor, ladies. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to talk about traffic control devices and how they provide for the safety of our community. So the official definition of a traffic control device is that it is a sign, a signal, a marking, or a device that is used to regulate, warn, or guide traffic. The purpose of a traffic control device, once again, is to promote highway safety and efficiency. So sources utilized to put this presentation together were the Texas Transportation Code, specifically Title VI, roadways, and Title VII, vehicles and traffic. We also took a look at the Texas Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And we referenced three City of Harlingen ordinances. In general, chapter 28, our Solicitor's Ordinance, and our itinerant merchants ordinance as well. Now, we, we are going to navigate through the City of Harlingen to show the different kinds of medians that we have. Today, we are highlighting one type of traffic control device, and that is a median. So I bring your attention to the first photo here at the very top. This is Walmart, and this is our mall on this side. This type of median is called a raised island. You notice right here, we do have a crosswalk for pedestrians to utilize. The photo below brings you to Loop 499. This is also a raised median that houses the Cora Foglitch. Now, of interest here is, if you notice this yellow line right here, and on this side, you have an additional yellow line. The whole area between these two yellow lines are the median. Another type of median is a crossing island. Crossing islands also referred as central islands or refuge islands. These are raised islands placed in the center of the street at intersections or mid-block locations to enhance pedestrian crossings. This one is located on Loop 499. And as you can see right here, it provides for the safety of the pedestrians. So the pedestrian can momentarily stand here while this area is clear from traffic. Another kind of island is a painted island. So this one right here has crosshatch marks. As you can see, this one below also has crosshatch mark as well. We're going to reference this here in a little bit. The last median in our city is a concrete median. And you see this one right here normally on our expressways. And this is to prevent crashes by passenger vehicles and trucks into uncommon traffic, or they are coming from uncommon traffic. Now, bring your attention to the crosshatch markings, because we're going to talk about what constitutes a violation when somebody drives over these markings. We researched three frequently asked questions. Question number one is, can I drive or park over a crosshatch painted island or median? And the answer is no. The hatched area surrounded by continuous white line, as you see in this photo above, prohibits vehicles from entering this area except in an emergency. And that is except in an immediate emergency. Where an emergency situation is not in progress, it is a traffic offense to enter this area. Now, below that photo, you will find another island, island with crosshatch markings. This is in the area of Tyler and Business 77. If I were to drive here, and if I wanted to make entrance into the parking lot here by cops, I would have to maintain this lane and then cross over here. If I travel directly over it, then I would be committing an offense. So when is it permitted to drive over a painted island? In this situation right here, I bring your attention to Dixieland in Lincoln. So you have Chick-fil-A on this side, and you have the fire department on this other side. This is a turning lane. Normally, we drive through here, wait here before turning. But let's say that this whole area is occupied. And now, we need additional space so that this traffic moving forward can still move forward, and we do, we do not want to block this area. So in this instance, it is permitted to continue to park here momentarily, waiting for the light to turn green. So that is permitted. Now, question number two, can I sell or solicit while standing on a roadway? And the answer is no. So the Texas Transportation Code prohibits a person from standing in a roadway and mandates charitable organizations to abide by city ordinance. So then we reference our city ordinances, specifically the one addressing licenses and permits. And it states that any commercial business conducting their business should not remain stationary at any location within or upon or over any public streets. Our City of Harlingen itinerant merchants ordinance prohibits selling on streets, sidewalks, or alleys. But then we have our solicitor ordinance that permits certain activity. If a charitable organization has met state and city ordinance requirements, then they are permitted to be on the roadway, according to our city ordinance. Question number three, can I sell items while standing on an island or median? And the answer is no. So once again, our transportation code states that it prohibits a person from standing in a roadway. Now, the definition of a roadway includes a median. This is why this is a no. And mandates, again, the charitable organizations to abide by city ordinances. Now, our Solicitor's Ordinance does prohibit solicitation upon any traffic island or median. So this is a definite no. Now, we do have some recommendations that we would like to submit to our legal department for review in order to update some of our ordinances. Any questions?
So these updates are kind of like for, as a result of the, the accident that happened just recently?
Well, we have been looking at the city ordinances for a while, since last year. It was a project in progress. Definitely, yes, that could be part of the deal. But this situation right here, let me just bring attention to this situation right here. This just happened recently. The city ordinance defines solicitors as somebody asking for a donation or soliciting. This gentleman right here, which, by the way, was a very nice man, was not doing that at all. He was actually providing an item to the drivers. Okay? So we were unable to use the city ordinance or enforce it, because he was not in violation of the city ordinance. However, we were able to utilize the transportation code to address this issue. So one of the changes that we wanted to provide or request is that the definition of a solicitor be changed to include situations like this. Yes?
So the, I guess I missed it, but if he's selling something, do we, do we, they have to come and get a permit? And we're allowing them to do that? Is that?
That is correct.
The current status?
A vendor, before he is allowed to sell anything within our streets, has got to stop with our city secretary. They'll pick up an application, and that application then is brought to the Harlingen police for processing.
Well, that could be anything from, like I said, whether it's a newspaper or even like Valentine's Day is coming up, so you're going to see a lot of vendors pop up.
That is correct.
With the balloons and the bears and candy and all that stuff, right?
Yes.
So that, that is a permitting process, right? They come to sit and get a permit for that?
Correct.
I didn't, and will this address, or the changes you proposed, address some of those situations?
Yes, it will, sir.
So is this going to affect, the changes your, your, your suggestion, is it going to affect the paper on the weekends, for example? Like, you know, the vendors, I know they were the best, and they saw the paper in the street.
Yes, it will. So I learned through my research that several years ago, probably before my time, there was a decision made and direction given that, I don't know if they were classified as vendors or not. In my research, they meet the definition of a vendor. So yes.
Does this prohibit minors, or there's no age limit?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, that would be another law that would cover that. The Texas Workforce Commission will, has their own laws that would prohibit minors from participating in this kind of activity.
Well, but we can't say I wanted to do something on the streets with my son. There's nothing to prevent me from doing that, is there? He's not vending, but I am.
Okay. Well, this is the question. The Texas, again, that is a question for the Texas Workforce Commission, and they will have to determine if a minor involved in any activity is actually employed or not employed.
Yeah, I think the rules takes, if it's your, if it's your business, you're okay. But if it's for a company, then it's prohibited.
But is that, is that something that we can instill ourselves?
Oh, absolutely. You know, with the revision of any of city ordinance, we can either include it in there or reference the Texas Workforce Commission.
Okay. So that was what I was getting at. Thanks.
I'm always seeing, especially in the Lincoln location, always seeing different type of people, either asking for money, or you got kids selling water. You know, it's, it's real dangerous, you know, for them running between traffic. So I, I understand what, you know, what you're trying to do. And, but it is, it is a danger, you know, and I see it, and I'm always reporting it. So, you know, see what recommendations you all have in legal house.
Yes, right. And again, our goal is just to promote the safety of our community.
All right. So it's your intent to, to bring back some recommendations to amend our ordinance regarding?
We have some already, and we'll be submitting them to our legal department.
All right. And once, once they've been reviewed by our city attorney's office, those will be back on the agenda for us to consider.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Another birthday.
You want to let Rodell and Mickey go, or you want to make them wait here for?
I really wanted to hear finance.
Let's go to item, let's go to item 18, consideration possible action of the EDC action to create a new incentive program for small business Harlingen helps.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Harlingen Helps is a program that is directed specifically to small businesses in Harlingen. Over the last year or so, we noticed that there's a, at least in our focus, we don't have a lot of focus on small business. And so we're trying to change that a little bit. And one of the things that we noticed is that in other cities, sometimes, for example, building fees are waived, or permit fees are waived for, for construction or renovations. And so we thought about some of the things that we wanted to do and looked at our statutes. And section 4A of the Development Corporation Act of 1979 actually dictates a lot of how we spend our money. But we found that we could, if there are site improvements conducted, actually help some of these small businesses that have been asking for help. Obviously, we all know that the small business community has a very strong impact on our, on, on our economy. Some of the SBA facts show that 60 cents of every dollar spent by sole proprietor is recirculated in the, in the community, whereas 20 cents from a chain store is recirculated. We all know that most of the jobs that are being created right now, and throughout the United States and specifically here in Harlingen, are because of small businesses. They contribute a very significant amount to the local economy. And small businesses are also the ones that participate in a lot of the charitable organizations in and around the community. So this was just our small business support, our efforts to try to bring in a little bit. So what we're doing is setting up a program that basically allows for the EDC to reimburse up to $1,500 per business for, example, for renovation of their ceilings, their floors, their stores. We've got an entire packet online that actually outlines what the eligible expenditures will be. We've got the application that's going to be actually available tomorrow, if you all approve it. And so basically, what we set aside was $300,000 to try to help at least 200 businesses with $1,500 apiece, up to $1,500, if they meet the requirements, of course. With that, I'll answer.
You have applications already?
Our applications are ready. They're actually in your packets. The webpage is ready to go live. It's not live yet. So yeah, we're going to be ready for that. Absolutely.
Do we have to repay this money back, or?
No, these are grants.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I know the, I know your board has been considering this for a couple of months now, several months now, and like y'all are ready to go. And so we need, does anybody have any questions for Rodell about the program?
It's really for, if you go back, we're going to postdate it to, if somebody started renovating back in June or July, we're going to count those renovations as part of this program. And all the way through May of this coming year.
You all run the same as we did January to December as far as your year, or?
Our fiscal year ends in October, but we're just going to go back to, to, to June 1st of 2019 as eligible expenditures.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the incentive program?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like a sign, motion carries. And then item 17, consideration of possible action to approve an economic development manager and chief executive officer employment contract between Rodell Garza and the Development Corporation of Harlingen, as recommended by the Harlingen Economic Development Board of Directors.
Every two years or so is, the last time we had a contract expire was two years ago. We renewed a contract, our employment agreement between myself and the board for two years, which expires tomorrow. But the board actually recommended approval. And it's basically the same thing. There's a little bit of an addition in that there's some protections for the EDC in terms of projects and where projects can be taken or not taken, that type of thing. Very similar to what real estate brokers sign when they sign tenant representation agreements. There's protection periods for the broker. There's protection periods for the, the owners. In this case, the owner being Harlingen EDC and the City of Harlingen. And so there's some protections there for Harlingen that were the only difference in, in terms of the agreement that is now in front of you versus the agreement from two years ago. And that's really it.
So the board, the board took action last week to approve, approve the agreement?
Yes, the board did approve it last week.
Okay. Is there, does anybody have any questions?
Just, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just had a real quick question. On the, the budget for $10,000 to $15,000 for, to continue your education, was that in there in the last contract?
Yes, it was. And we just made one change there. We added one category that he could use for other continuing education.
Okay. And are you able to utilize that? Have you used it?
I haven't actually used it yet, because honestly, I've been too busy. I'd love to go back to school and, and, and continue with my education.
It's a little over, isn't it?
But, you know, family time and, and work just doesn't allow it at this time.
And the, the only reason I ask that is if, if you don't utilize it, can we maybe next time, or I don't know if you can, I don't know how it works out, but maybe use that, that budget for like maybe scholarships to the Harlingen high schools? Would that be a possibility if you don't use it?
Well, I don't know about that. I mean, then we're getting into what, what our funds are eligible for.
Okay.
So I'm going to defer to our expert.
You would have to be a qualifier, and after qualify. I mean, you can re, you can redirect any, any of the funding can be redirected, but has to qualify under four, under the 4A statute.
Gotcha.
There, there are some creative ways of, of helping training for employers or for employees, for students who have a commitment to a job, that type of thing. So we can always look into it and, and consider that as a budget for, for the next, next fiscal year.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, we did just, just something like that. We did just provide TSTC some funding for students to help them, at-risk students to help them finish their education. So we are sensitive to education.
Those that were on the border, right? I mean, they're, they're almost done, and they couldn't get over it.
Right.
Okay. Any other, any other questions on item 17? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion of second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like a sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rodell.
Okay. And?
Where do you want to go now?
I'm going to, I'm going to just, just do one more skip around, because we've got Kyle and Larry in the audience. And so I thought we'd go to item 14, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading. first reading for request of special use permit to allow a bar lounge in a general retail GR district for lots thirteen and fourteen, block forty-five, Harlingen original town site, located at two oh four West Jackson Avenue. Applicant Larry Keim on behalf of Orpheus Partners.
Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening. This is a special use permit for a bar. This place has been a bar since twenty fifteen, but there's a change of ownership, and that's why we have a special use permit that coming before you at this time. This is in the downtown. The zoning is general retail district. It's at the corner of A Street and Jackson Avenue, in the highlighted property. That's the site plan of the building. Like I said, it's been a bar since twenty fifteen, Carlitos Winehouse. That's the building. It's a very nice structure in the downtown. Aerial photograph showing where the building is located. Staff recommends approval of the SUP, limited to one year. The applicant will need to apply for renewal. One of the requirements, a security officer must be in place during peak hours, Thursday through Saturday from nine PM to twelve midnight. Must provide video surveillance for thirty-day retention. Adequate lighting inside and outside the business at all times. Must maintain TABC permits. Smoking, no smoking allowed inside the building, and must comply with all the requirements of planning, building inspections, fire department, health, fire and police. Planning and Sony Commission met on January twenty-seven, and no one spoke in opposition to the special use permit request, and the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval.
So, other than the ownership, nothing's changing?
Nothing is changing, no.
Okay. I don't believe they have a liquor license, or liquor is still doing the beer and wine only? Beer and wine only?
Beer and wine only.
All right, so we'll go to item A, public hearing. Is anyone like to speak for or against this special use permit? Is there anyone? Want to speak for?
Well, my name is Larry Keim. I'm the applicant, one of the applicants, along with Kyle Ragera. As you folks may know, or probably know, the wine bar was opened in August of twenty fifteen, has been a huge boost in the arm, booster shot in the arm to the downtown. In the words of our former city downtown manager, Cheryl LaBerge, "It's a game changer for the downtown," and it really has been. It's been a tremendous asset. I've been proud to have been the developer that helped get the thing started. Louis, the current owner, wants to step aside now and do some other things, and thought I should have first dibs on it, and I took the offer. That kind of sucker. But it's a great place, and I think it does a lot to benefit the downtown. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else like to speak for or against a special use permit? Hearing now, close the public hearing, go to item B, consideration possible action to approve an ordinance of first reading for a special use permit to allow a bar lounge in retail GR district of the above-described property, and ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Larry Keim, DBA Orpheus Partners LLC, to allow a bar lounge in general retail district for lots thirteen and fourteen, block forty-five, Harlingen original town site, located at two oh four West Jackson Avenue. Subject to, one, the special use permit will be limited to one year, and the applicant would be required to apply for renewal. Two, provision of a security officer during peak hours of operation, Thursday through Saturday from nine PM to twelve midnight. Two, provision of video surveillance with thirty-day retention period. Three, provision of adequate lighting inside and outside of the business. Four, obtain and maintain proper state permits. Five, compliance with code of ordinance, Chapter twenty-two, Article three, Sections twenty-two dash fifty-four to twenty-two dash sixty-six. Smoking regulations. And six, compliance with the requirements administered by the Planning and Development Department, Building Inspections Department, Environmental Health Department, Fire Prevention Bureau, and Police Department.
Right. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, now we'll go to item six, which is a presentation by the finance director regarding the first quarterly financial review fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Today, I'll begin our first quarterly financial review, which I'll be doing quarterly. The format should look familiar since it's part of your monthly report. On the first slide, we have revenues, which are just for the general fund, and on the first column, you have your total budgeted revenues at forty-three point nine million. On your second column is what we have realized to date. So, we've realized thirteen point seven million in revenues to date. So, the next columns just calculate a percentage of, so it's the first quarter, so we would expect to be like a twenty-five percent of our budget. So, based on that percentage, we have slightly exceeded that twenty-five percent. We're at thirty-one percent. So, we are over approximately six percent. So, we're slightly over, we'll be expected to collect...
What's the dollar amount? Is that the one on the right?
This is the percentage that we're over. So, we're over about six point two.
Right, but the next column, over, the over/under, that's the dollar.
So, that is like the estimated dollar amount that we're over, so...
If we're on track, right?
Yeah, so we're on track. So, we're about six percent over. And that's total revenues for the general fund. The next slide goes to general fund expenditures, and this is on two slides because it's kind of small. So, it's the same concept, the expenditures of the budget by department. So, we have the department here, and the budget for the year here, and this is the expenditures of the actual for the first quarter. Go to the next slide. This is the rest of the departments.
I asked this question earlier, just so I'm following along. There's going to be items where, because of where we're at right now, whether we purchase something or whatever, we use a hundred percent of that budget. So, it's going to show that that line item has now been fulfilled, right?
Right, like some of these, like if you notice some of these, maybe...
So, what I had asked Dan to do, just to simplify it, is if you could, whenever you do the next quarter's one, highlight the ones that, look, these budgets are gone, or I mean, we've already used them up, we don't expect to use anymore in this line item, so that we can constantly... I always like to...
By like department or...
I'm sorry?
By department.
However, however you're doing it, you know, like, for example, let's say it's just, I don't know, like swimming pools, right? I'll use the swimming pool as an example. Whether in your budget, you're going to have for chemicals, for maintenance, or whatever, usually those projects are pretty much, once we put the budget, you'll get on top of it and take care of the budget.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. So, we cover the funds, so some funds we can't cover.
Right, and so, there's going to be maybe ten percent of that budget is left over, but pretty much the labor's going to take care of that, right? I mean, or the other soft costs to operate that. I don't know if you could just kind of like I said, once it's a hundred percent, you know, put it in some kind of color system, like this one's done, this one's ninety percent used up.
That'll require more because I'll have to go into more detail because this is just by department?
However you do get it, just to summarize, because what I'd like to see going as we go through this process is focus on the stuff that we're not hitting. You know, in my experience, when I do stuff like that, it's great to see the positives, like the six percent that we're over, and that's great.
Right.
But if we're not paying attention to where we're bleeding, you know, we're not being that proactive. We have a problem in this area, we're over budget, we need to tighten up on that, you know?
Right, right.
So, that's kind of the, my thought process on being able to see something like that. Then, and I'm just...
On these, the positive numbers are like we're over in the first quarter, like what we're estimated to be at twenty-five percent, we've kind of gone over like in swimming pools.
But yes, this says dollars. If we're short, you know, ten grand, I don't want that to turn into forty grand at the end of the year. If it was ten grand...
As far as like exceeding the budget?
Sure, you exceed the budget.
Yeah.
Once we're going over, that's got to be like a red flag of saying, hey, let's figure out, or there's got to be an answer. Maybe there's an answer of why...
I could definitely do that, but we do have controls in place where we, when we have a set budget, we're not allowed to go over it. So, everything that is reviewed by the finance department, where our budget manager reviews it, and if she sees that it's going to exceed the budget, she stops.
Well, again, but that's based upon percentage, and sales drives everything, right?
Right.
So, we're being very conservative on our sales, right? And it's good we budget for that.
Right.
My thing is if we're up ten percent, I don't want to blow it, because, I don't want to, not say blow it, but I want to make sure that we're utilizing those monies for stuff that we kicked out of the budget.
Okay.
You know, because you all have a very hard task of putting that together, and doing without this, and you're asking every department to make it work.
Right.
It'd be nice to, you know, as we're going through it, like I said, if we're able to say, hey, we have positive money, we look at that list of whatever got kicked out, and just, it's just a tool. I mean...
I can come up with something, and I'll sit with Dan, and then we'll work something out. So, on expenditures, we have forty-nine million, forty-nine point six million in expenditures budgeted. We've already reached twelve point two. So, at this point, we are right on par. We're about point three five percent of the budget. This one is the same expenditures, it's just in a different format. I've done it by type, so you can see personnel services, service charges, supplies, improvements, streets, economic incentives. So, it's the same percentage, thirty-five, point thirty-five. This slide is all other funds. It's total revenue for all other funds. You have the tennis courts, hotel motel, catastrophic, and it just details each one compared to the budget. This is the other funds, all other funds expenditures compared to budget. These are revenues and expenses for the enterprise fund, and that also summarized by fund. The enterprise, the internal service fund, also comparative between revenues and expenses. And then, finally, we have for the third quarter, what we've invested in capital assets during the first quarter of the year. So, we've invested approximately one point nine million in capital assets. And that is the last slide. And I'll work on a presentation with Dan for that, for the next meeting.
Yeah, my thing was the idea is to have just a summary, and I know it's just a lot of information, and you know, just being able to keep dove on it would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the report. This is a great exercise, and I look forward to continuing to do this on a quarterly basis. Okay. Item next is the consent agenda, items seven, eight through C. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've done eight and nine, so we're going to go to ten. Consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the Harlingen Police Department, to submit a grant application to the Office of the Governor Homeland Security Grants Division to provide funding for overtime costs and operating expenses for additional manpower to enhance and improve border security under fiscal year twenty twenty-one local border security program.
City Commissioners and Mayor, this is a reoccurring grant. We would like to continue to accept this grant in order to continue to do highway, bus, and parcel interdictions, as well as street-level interdictions, major cases, and SWAT operations.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eleven, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the Harlingen Police Department, to submit a grant application to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, a five oh one C three organization, for twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars, for ten automated external defibrillators and three hundred and fifty combat application tourniquets.
We would like to utilize these funds in order to equip all officers with a tourniquet, and also utilize the AEDs for all the patrol supervisors' vehicles, including one being assigned to SWAT, to the SWAT team.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize and approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twelve, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the City of Harlingen, to submit a grant application for forty-five thousand, one hundred and nine dollars, twenty-eight cents to the Office of the Governor Homeland Security Grants Division under fiscal year twenty twenty-one state homeland security program.
We currently have sixteen SWAT operators. We would like to utilize these funds to equip each one of them with a special helmet when, so they can communicate with each other and listen to each other without having, in this case, a suspect be open to their communications.
Okay, is there a, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Assistant Chief, thank you for keeping an eye out for all those opportunities to get some more dollars in to help fund our police activities. Thank you. Item thirteen, consideration and possible action to approve a request for a ten-foot-wide utility easement to be granted to the Harlingen Water Works System on a zero point zero two two acre tract of land out of certain zero point one four four acre tract out of block fifty-five, Harlingen Land and Water Company subdivision, located on the twenty-four hundred block of East Tyler Avenue.
Yes, this is a city property that should be going out for bids in the near future. It's part of the properties that were identified that the city has or owns that could be sold to put these properties back in the tax roll. So, this is a property that belongs to the city. It's a very small property where Tyler and Harrison converge. It's just east of the gas station, and it's this property. But it has a water line running along the west side. There's an existing water line. So, this easement is to protect that water line. If the property is sold, that line is protected, and it's a very important water line for the city.
Okay. Anybody have any questions here? Is there a motion to approve the request for the easement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, the motion carries. We've done item fourteen, so we'll go to item fifteen, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the planned development site plan to adjust setbacks for a fifteen point one eight acre tract of land out of block ninety-five, Long Sea Hill subdivision, located on the west side of Ed Carey Drive, south of Morris Road.
This is a subdivision that is under construction, is almost complete at the corner of Ed Carey and Morious Road at the southeast corner, southwest corner. It's a zone of planned development district. The site plan for the planned development was approved by the city commission in December sixth, twenty seventeen, but the developers are requesting a change. This is the original proposal, and what they proposed back then are conventional homes in the outer lots. But in the lots in purple, they designed them as patio homes, which allow a zero setback on one side and a ten-foot side setback on the other side. But after further thought, the developers, they want to have conventional houses for all the lots, which will make it five feet setback on each side. And that's basically all that is being requested to, to change the planned development site plan to make all the houses in the subdivision to be conventional houses with the regular side setbacks.
Item A is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the amendment to this planned development site plan? Anyone who'd like to speak for or against the amendment to the planned development site plan? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the planned development site plan to adjust setbacks for a fifteen point eighteen acre tract of land out of block ninety-five, Long Sea Hill subdivision, located on the west side of Ed Carey Drive, south of Morris Road, and ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, amending the planned development site plan to adjust setbacks for a fifteen point eighteen acre tract of land out of block ninety-five, Long Sea Hill subdivision, located on the west side of Ed Carey Drive, south of Morris Road, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item sixteen, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution to open a pro... Item 16, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution to open a brokerage account to accept a donation to the library and designate the city manager as the signatory.
Good evening. Back in December of 2019, we came forward to the City Commission to ask for a resolution to allow the, the city manager to open a brokerage account with TDMR Trade. Through December and January, tried to open that account, they gave us a difficult time because it required too much personal information. So we consulted with our financial advisor, and they recommended possibly opening the brokerage account through our financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, and then closing it and cashing it in. So I contacted the executor of, of the estate, and he was okay with that. So now we're coming forward to amend the original one to allow us to open the brokerage account at Hilltop Securities, to accept the donation for the library.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Robert. So, we took care of the two EDC items, 17 and 18, and then item 19 is a suggestion that I think is a good one, and that is to authorize, that we have, that we take some time as a commission, maybe invite some other, maybe our, maybe our EDC chairman, our Water Works Chairman, our airport chairman, and their directors to join with us and some of our staff to do a, a little retreat and planning, a strategic planning session, maybe over the course of like a Friday evening and Saturday, or a Thursday evening and a Friday, whatever works for everybody's calendar. Bring in a facilitator, give us an opportunity to maybe look at the, look at the goals...
What does that mean? Facilitator? What is a facilitator?
Um...
Tell me, tell me not to wear shorts.
A, or it could be a, or it could be a chef, it could be a special chef, you know? Whatever you guys, whatever you guys want to do, whatever makes you happy. And, 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 you know, I think it would be good to, you know, look at our comprehensive plan, kind of pick out the things that the commission is interested in focusing on over the next year or two, and, and having an opportunity to, to discuss these things and set some, some goals for the city and our staff. So I would just like to make sure, ask if y'all are on board with that, and if so, then we'll start that planning process.
Absolutely.
So, motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I, I think that'll be a, a good thing for us to do. Item 20, board appointments, or anything else? Any, any other board appointments?
I have no board appointments.
I have one to the Community Development Advisory Board, Jesus Garcia, and that's...
Okay.
None.
So, motion to approve board appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 21 is an executive closed session, attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.0712, Texas Government Code, to receive legal advice pertaining to the Harlingen Convention Center project. Is there a motion to go on executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, we're going to consult with our attorney, and there, since there's no action to be contemplated, I don't think that there's any, there's no action that we will come back and take after we're out of executive session.[1781.56]